I call the Rochester Common Council meeting for June 25th to order. And Councilman Clevinger, would you start us out with a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the May 28th meeting? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Smith to approve the minutes. Those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Board of Public Works and Safety minutes for May the 9th. We'll include for information only.
Well, that should be May 9th and 23rd, not May 7th.
Oh, I see. That's an "and." Okay. May 9th and 23rd. All right. I want to apologize right now. Our clerk treasurer, I don't know what's happening, but there's been a lot of errors here just recently. Typos, typos, typos.
No, the typo that was caught earlier was not my typo.
Oh, I see.
Oh, we're talking under the bus.
Never is.
Oh.
But I won't hook anybody into the bus.
You won't?
Might have been my typo. Just saying. Might have been.
Down to it.
Might have been. Okay. We don't have any -- well, do we have a communication? Was this a letter?
Yeah, that was the letter from the class of 63. I just wanted to make sure that --
Cindy Hayes' letter?
Yes. Just to make sure the council had seen it for their own information.
Board of Works took care of it.
They took no action, so...
That's good.
Well, yeah.
Let it go.
Well, we turned her back around to Georgia over at the center to see what Georgia's input would be on this. For the record, the class of 1963 would like to put some kind of a plaque or something on memorializing the site where the senior center is right now as the former RHS High School. Which, yeah, I don't have any problem, even though we didn't go there, Marty. You know, we were too young.
First study all, and didn't like.
I guess.
We walked across the street.
Yeah. We went to Lincoln Junior High.
And the hospital.
Someday somebody will want to come up there, too. I'm sure you and I could do that. But anyway, I referred her to Georgia, and I don't know that they've had that meeting yet, but we'll probably hear something back after they speak.
Yeah, that's why it was just more, like I said, I didn't think there was any action, just we received it.
Unless I apologize because I missed the meeting yesterday, but I sent an email to Georgia this morning, and she didn't give anything back to me, so I don't know if they -- I'll find out about this. I don't know if they talked about it or not.
Did we mention it was time for your report yet? Did I miss that?
Don't know if they talked about it or not.
Okay.
It is getting rough in here.
They gave the floor, isn't he?
It's getting rough in here.
He started. I heard kind of amazed.
It's getting rough.
Okay. We have -- Shotta, she left the room.
Okay. Well, we have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished old business. No new business, except for ordinances and resolutions.
Sammy died just in time.
Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. We're looking at Resolution 03-2019, dormant funds. Shotta, you want to explain the dormant funds? That has to do with the water department, right?
No.
I'm sorry. Okay.
The resolution is for essentially over a period of two years, if we have any funds in our general ledger system that have become dormant, which means they're funds that we have no longer used for, haven't used them in two years, we haven't had any activity in them. State Board of Accounts recommends that we declare those as dormant funds, and if there are any cash balances left in those funds, then that cash balance needs to be transferred to either the general fund or the rainy day fund. Or in this case, we have the one grant fund. I've already spoke to the State Board of Accounts about this because I wanted to make sure that I followed proper procedure. And we had the Operation Pullover Grant had a negative balance in it for when we ended the program, so they recommended that because I had fund balances with the city building debt fund, that we just transfer a cash balance after we made that balance to zero, and then the rest of it, we would just transfer. I'm recommending we put it into the rainy day fund and just transfer any remaining balance to rainy day and increase that rainy day balance. So, and then we would declare the Operation Pullover Grant Fund, the LCC Grant Fund, City Building Debt Fund, and the Minno Creek Assessment Fund all dormant, and I would make those inactive funds transfer balances, and they come off our books.
Okay, so this is --
Because they're no longer used.
This is a cleanup resolution.
Correct.
All of those are taxpayer funds, right?
No. The only one that was actually a tax-supported fund was the City Building Debt Fund, and that was from a debt that I paid off early in 2014. I recommended to the council to have that because we had enough cash balance, so we paid that debt off early. Some of you that were here will recall that, and therefore that left us with a sizable balance in that fund because we still were receiving, based on the tax rule, and we're still receiving a payment into that debt schedule for the rest of that year, which gave us an extra, or I'm sorry, the next two years. And so that gave us that $26,000 balance.
So the $1,000 in the Minno Creek Assessment Fund is not taxpayer-funded, right?
No, that was from the assessment done back in the 70s.
Is there a fund that can go into, then is there a fund that can go into that's not in tax?
No, this one, that actually was a debt fund, but it was issued under an assessment with Minno Creek back in the 70s. So that was a debt that we were paying to the county.
Okay.
So this one, we would, with the State Board of Accounts, the way all debt funds run is they would typically go into the rainy day or general. The only other, that particular one, we could transfer that to the Minno Creek Maintenance Fund, that 994. We could take that one and put it into that maintenance fund as opposed to putting it into rainy day.
Would you happen to recall what the rainy day fund balance would be if we did this?
After the transfer, we would be, as of today, and we haven't paid out our final bill for the Four Street project, but as of today, it would take us up to about a $1.4 million balance, right around there. We're just shy of $1.4. Once we pay out the final payment for the Four Street project, that will take us down to 700,000, 700,000, 800,000, right around there.
Will we be having some expense come out of that Minno Creek Maintenance Fund soon?
Possibly. If we do some cleanup work, we're getting some, am I right, money? We're getting some quotes on getting some cleanup services coming in to do some cleanups of logs and things like that, so there may be some coming out. We've got right now a balance, I think, in that fund is 12,000. Does not receive any revenue other than what's there. It's not something that is, we receive any more revenue from because that was done when the county did the ditch assessment on Minno Creek, again, back in the mid-'70s. That was all put into place and all the revenue unless they implement some kind of an additional assessment fee on that particular ditch, there won't be any other additional revenues coming into that fund.
Those revenues have been held there in suspension for a very long time. We've had maintenance on Minno Creek, but it has not been real expensive. We're just, we're now at the point where we've got some trees and stumps and stuff in the area that need to be taken out. Yeah, we're working on that. I, you know, it's six to one half a dozen another.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I usually go with the rainy day fund because that's kind of our, where we can put everything in a day.
No problem.
Right. I mean, if we have to do anything additional with rainy day, there's a couple of extra steps with the state just because it is rainy day, but as long as we have appropriation available, we can still utilize that fund. And with rainy day, we can use it for a lot of different purposes.
Okay. Chase, we're looking at Resolution 03-2019. We just started some discussion about it. Do I have a motion for the reading of 03-2019? Is there any more discussion? I have a, it's been moved for reading of 03-2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Heidi. Those in favor of the reading? Those are okay, signify, I reckon. Okay, so unanimous. Okay. Would you like to read the resolution?
Resolution 03-2019, a resolution to transfer dormant fund balance and dissolve dormant fund. Whereas the City of Rochester Common Council finds that the purposes for which the following funds were created are no longer in effect. Operation Pullover Grant balanced negative $1,260.90. LCC Grant balanced $54.42. City Building Debt Fund balanced $26,790.84. Minno Creek Assessment Fund balanced $994.07. And whereas those funds have been dormant for more than two years and the monies collected into this fund have not been appropriated, whereas the State Board of Accounts encourages dormant fund balances to be transferred for efficient money management, now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Rochester directs the clerk treasurer to Section 1, declare the Operation Pullover Grant, LCC Grant, City Building Debt Fund, and Minno Creek Assessment Funds dormant. Section 2, transfer dormant fund balance as follows. $1,260.90 to Operation Pullover Grant Fund from City Building Debt Fund. $25,529.94 to Rainy Day from City Building Debt Fund. $54.42 to Rainy Day Fund from LCC Grant Fund. $994.07 to Rainy Day Fund from Minno Creek Debt Fund. Section 3 of this, this resolution shall be in full force and effect after its passage.
Do I have a motion for approval of Resolution 03-2019?
It's moved.
Second. Moved by Smith, seconded by Goodman. Those in favor? And it's unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda is an ordinance. This is 04-2019. It's the sewer cap and video fees ordinance.
Marcus had me texted, and he was handling that situation that we got the phone about earlier.
Okay. Okay. I am going to recommend that we postpone until Marcus can be here to explain and detail everything that this ordinance involves. It's quite, he's done quite a bit of research on it, and there's lots of things that can answer questions, so we'll postpone. Okay, we'll go down to the department heads.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we probably ought to have a motion.
Later in the meeting, you mean?
No. No, till the next meeting. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Marty? Moved by Smith, seconded by Andrew to postpone. Those in favor?
Of the resolution.
Thank you all. Yeah, we didn't anticipate his absence. He had an emergency to deal with. And Chief Butler, you made it, man. You had an emergency as well. And by the way, as he walks to the podium, let's wish him happy birthday tonight. Marty?
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I figured I'd work the holiday and collect all the extra money, so I'll wait.
I was just gonna tell you what a company man he was, and then he just blew it.
Well, I mean, I'm sure he'll reflect in my bonus esteem.
Yes, sir.
Wait. Mr. Waish, as much as you got.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good to have you here tonight, Chief.
Thank you. For the month of May, structure fires, one in the city, one in Richland Township. Mutually fires, one in the Henry Township, one in the Macy Fire. We had an oven fire in Rochester Township. Grass fires, two in Rochester Township. Calls for smoke, two in the city. Auto fire alarms, two in the city. Gas leaks, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Accidents, one in the city, four in Rochester Township. Medical assists, 21 in the city, seven in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. This would be hard to believe, we actually had trees and power lines, so that was one in the city, four in Rochester Township. Service calls, one in the city. Cancelled calls, five in the city, for a total of 58 calls, and we conducted one training drill. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Sorry, wait a minute.
Dan?
Wait a minute. How about a report on the truck firing?
The cabin chassis, the last time I spoke with our rep, will be completed the 17th of July. It'll go to Charlotte. We will do a pick list with the cabin chassis, and why, probably within the next week after the fourth, they're gonna start the body construction in South Haven at Spencer. So when the two of them meet, they'll be almost ready to start working in the body and the tank and all that structure. Once they arrive together, inspecting the final bodywork, then it goes to paint. All that's done up at South Haven. I plan on making several site visits. If anyone from the board would like to go up to South, about a two-hour drive, to see what this process is like, and maybe it'll help appreciate the cost of this, because it is, I mean, it's not like there's four pickup trucks going down this end of the line and they're all saying, this is a made-by-scratch-to-race spec truck. It's pretty neat to see the craftsmanship that goes into these things. Again, like I said, once I get dates, we're gonna go up to visit. I'll get with Shotta and shake a shit of an email out, but if someone from the council would like to go, it's an interesting trip. I said it's a two-hour drive, it's not too far. So we're welcome even on the weekends. Grant Spencer, the vice president, his dad owns it, but he's the working management of the company now, says because we're a volunteer accommodation department, he's willing to meet us up there on Saturday morning so the volunteers can do it. So that's kind of comfortable we're dealing with, because he wants everyone to have ownership in the truck. So we're getting close. Things are starting to come together. So right now in Charlotte, it's on the line. I'm not sure where it's at in the line, but it's rolling down.
So we're on schedule, basically?
Yes, very much so.
Good.
Appreciate the best of my knowledge.
Appreciate your keeping track of that, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Thank you much.
Yeah.
Chief Shotts?
Happy birthday, buddy. Happy birthday, buddy. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
For the month of May, there were told of 24 accidents. All of those were property damage. We issued 101 total warnings, 105 offenses, 60 case reports, 843 calls for service, 39 lockouts, 12 tow vehicles, and 38 people incarcerated. And then you have the list of crimes those individuals were logged for. As you can see, warmer weather, higher call volume force.
The landfills, huh?
They're consistent in that.
They are, though.
Especially if the weather warms up a little bit.
I don't mind that. It's the freezing cold that I don't enjoy.
Well, you can tell the weather's warming up because we've had one public --
A new category on Tuesday.
Yeah. It only comes out in the summer. Marty, very sorry.
That's gonna go, you guys, I figure out what's gonna go along with, because I'm staging also.
What was it? That, the oven fire, council must apologize.
I'm saying, Mayor couldn't, my office, I don't think that's enough, and I don't, I don't even know.
In other news, Mayor Dent and I are gonna meet with the school board on July 8th.
The Board of Works approved us offering to assign a full-time officer to the school as an SRO. So we're gonna meet with the school board July 8th and present that offer. As you know, Skeeter has been an SRO, and the way that, the way that's done is that we just give him arrest power by making him a reserve, because he's a school employee. I've been getting less and less comfortable with that arrangement, just because there could be a conflict of interest, and it's hard to be objective in a position like that when, when he has to make decisions, but his paycheck's in the school. I understand his position, but I'm just getting less and less comfortable with it. I've reached out to the Indiana Association of School Resource Officers, and the overwhelming way it's done it is that a police agency assigns a full-time officer in the school. That is the recommended way of doing it. I've included some information on standards and best practices that the National SRO Association recommends. That's their method of doing it. So just to kind of clean things up, I recommend that we don't renew the MOU, but we see the value of an SRO in school, obviously, so we don't want to take that away. So our alternative is to offer assigning an officer to the school. We decided, Lieutenant Campbell and I sat down and had a conversation about all of our officers. We feel that Officer Ed Ames would be a great fit for that role. He's been involved in youth sports, the church, Sunday School. He's a foster family. He's a former substitute teacher for a year over at Valley in Akron, so we feel he'd be a really good fit for that role. So we took the initiative, trying to be proactive with this, and we've already sent him to SRO the school. In order to be a school resource officer, you have to complete a 40-hour basic SRO course. Those courses are very limited between now and the start of school. There's one in French Lake next month that he was unable to attend, and there's one in September that's gonna be out for the start of the school year, so we just want to be proactive, want to be sent with that. We're not trying to force our will or impose our will on anyone. We're just, if our offer came to fruition, we had to be prepared for it. So those are the steps that we're gonna be taking.
Is it a 12-month position or?
It's a, it's a full-time position at the school Monday through Friday when they're on breaks, in fall break, spring break, Christmas break. He'll come back to the road. Over the summer, he'll come back to the road, work patrol, because obviously you have to get his 40 hours in, just like anybody else.
What if, what if they don't take us up on the offer? What are we, are we revoking the arrest powers?
Well, I, like I said, I'm recommending that we don't renew the MOU, so if they don't accept our offer, then that's totally their right, and they have that option. They'll just have to figure it out from their own there, and we can't really tell them what to do. It's, he's our employee. Like I said, we just see, we see deficiency there, and we're just trying to make it better.
Well, it isn't just the arrest powers, it's the investigating powers. And we've had some issues where we believe that the objectivity of a full-time police officer reporting to the governing body outside the institution they're operating in keeps the lines of objectivity a lot clearer. There's a, there's a process you go through to do an investigation, you have to take it from beginning to end. We've reached out, had some discussions with other schools that have SROs. The Caston situation, the MOU there that the Sheriff's Department has put in place in Caston is one of the best MOUs we have come across in reaching out to folks, and that is the DFP reports to the sheriff. Talked to North Miami school board member, they have an SRO, it's a female SRO, who reports directly to the sheriff, and they clearly feel that is a better situation than them reporting directly to the school.
Will our person wear a uniform all day?
Absolutely, yep. Yep. It'd be a police officer. Yep, it'd be a police officer assigned in the school. He'd be in uniform. We recognize, even with our current MOU, we recognize there are times that a soft uniform would be more beneficial as far as khakis and a polo that identifies him as a police officer. I think that's gonna be a few apart between, we want people to recognize him as a police officer, so they've got that good relationship, starting in school at a very young age with the police department, so they know who you go to if you need help.
The thing about the uniform, one of the big things is if there, God forbid, there is an active shooter situation, and you've got a conservation officer or another officer of any kind, they're all trained to respond and go in for an active shooter. Well, you get the conservation officer running in, and you see somebody in a doctor's and a polo shirt with a clock, he's gonna take him out. You know, there's a strong possibility of that. So, you know, we feel it's important that that individual look like a police officer at all times. The other thing, too, is, I don't think it's a bad idea personally that students and staff get to know what a police officer's all about and make that, you know, make that a presentable thing to folks, approachable thing to folks. We have young folks all through the community who don't know how to approach a police officer, and I think that, that helps if they've been exposed to one in the school. I don't know. That's a personal opinion of mine.
So this create a, need for an additional officer?
It would be very beneficial. We were kind of proactive with this. I added it in our budget, hiring a 13th officer, but taking those wages and benefits at a low instead of a general fund. So I increased our low-it appropriation to make up for that, if it doesn't come out of our general fund. Obviously, you guys will have to approve that when we have budget meetings, and then the Board of Works will have to approve hiring a 13th officer. So, but I did, and Mayor and I discussed that, and it was his idea to add that to our budget, so we'll see how that plays out. But, I mean, we'll have a July meeting and make our offer first and see what happens. And that's all we're gonna do, is just make an offer. I hope that they accept it, Michael. We'll see.
And where does that go then, Chief Shotts? After you make the offer, does it come back to, do we vote on something like that, or is that simple?
No. No. It's up to the school board whether or not, the school board and superintendent, whether or not they want to accept our offer. And then any MOU that is entered into is between the school board, superintendent, and then the Board of Works. Is that correct, E.D.? So that's, just wanted to kind of give you, I know mostly you've probably read it in Saturday paper, but wanted to give you a small presentation on what that's about and where we're going with that.
Will we be asking them to contribute financially to the --
At this time, we're not. We know it's kind of a last-minute thing. I mean, we wanted to have a meeting early in June because the current MOU expires at the end of this month. Our meeting was around the 11th, I think, of June. We didn't want to wait until the last minute and say, yeah, we're not gonna do this anymore. So we wanted to kind of be proactive, give them time to wrap their head up and see what they can figure out and what we can figure out for the place.
Again, talking to a school board member in North Miami, their situation is they're getting some grant money for the officer, the school is, and they're turning that grant money over to the Sheriff's Department, and it's a regular officer, they're just paying the regular. And I don't know that our school has a grant money's coming for that.
I don't know.
We're not asking for that.
But that's the discussion.
If they do, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing, because where's the SRO now, between all four schools?
Yeah.
So I wouldn't mind us paying for one if it's in our budget, we approve it, it's middle school, high school, and if they want to, if they get grant money and want to pay for an officer, we add another one to the middle schools or to the elementary schools, and we're having a lot of rotation, but I mean, it's Rochester, we're not far, we're not far from one thing or other, but a few minutes makes a difference in that.
When sectioned count? One second's count, minutes or, or take the world. But obviously, more than one would be ideal, one in each school would be awesome.
Peru has three part-time officers. None of them are full-time, but they all have a part-time assignment.
As far as the, the payment of the money contribution or that's a conversation and a raisement, it's above my pay grade. So that's for Mayor and you guys and the Board of Works to decide. I can't decide that.
Do you have enough money in your budget for two officers if that would happen then, this year?
This year, no. No. All I'm doing right now is resigning an officer from Patrol to SRO.
I'm just saying, if you retire two new officers or two new officers to replace Ostrom and Ed.
Well.
For this year?
This year, no.
Okay.
Ostrom's leaving, yeah, that's what I get to next.
Okay.
So the accepting application to, to replace him, but I, I add money in our low-it.
Oh, okay.
To hire a thirteenth officer, but that wouldn't take effect until January, January budget. Anything else about that?
And, and, and you know, it's not a hundred percent assured that our offer would be accepted.
No, that's right.
But we're, we're getting out from under a left-handed situation.
What about Dean?
Oh, dude. No, I don't want to get, I don't want to go there. But what, what are there just, what are there other options?
There's others, I mean, they, they could technically go to the sheriff and the sheriff could issue a reserve. And they could take it on themselves. They could create their own police department. Skeeter could be the chief if they want to do, do it that way. You know, if they want to keep him on it. As an administrative role, you know, just if they accept our offer, just want to, because I don't want to see anyone lose their job and I don't think anyone else does. But I, I think there's a role that Skeeter could fill and a valuable role that he could play as far as security personnel or safety coordinator or whatever you want to call it. But that's really not up to me, how they proceed if they don't accept our offer. But I, there are other options out there. And then next is Corporal Ostrom is, is resigning. And I, I've had this, I've known about this since he applied. He received an offer from Escobee County, Florida. Him and his wife wanted to move down to Florida for about four or five years. Time he was right for them, so he's accepted that position down there. And he'll be resigning effective July 8th. He's one of our K nine officers and the Board of Works did agree to retire ours, which is his K nine dog. The dog's been on the road five and a half years, he is nine years old. So there's really no value in retraining that dog, it's very expensive. And, and it doesn't make a lot of sense when, you know, a dog's been, been with one handler for five and a half years.
At, at the age of the dog and the, the years he's been working with this handler, it's a toss-up as to whether it would stay a canning out, the new handler.
So we're going to retire the dog. And again, when we come to budget time, I'll be talking to you guys about that. I put it next year's budget, since this wasn't really planned. So I put it next year's budget, maybe we can hire, get a second dog next year. And then the Board of Works did approve accepting applications, so that'll be in the paper here shortly. And we'll be accepting applications for the hiring replacement. And then, yeah, Chris Lee says also, I've got a department full of quitters right now. Chris Lee's getting her letter of intent. I know.
Retirees.
Retirees!
She's going to be retiring at the end of this year. So we went ahead and hired a replacement, she's going to start in July.
How many years for Chris?
Twenty-seven years with the city. So, and her, when her mom was former clerk also. Yes. Yes.
She served clerk for two, three terms, I believe?
Yep. So we're going to get her replacement. Get in there July 1st, so Chris can train her for six months because Chris is my right hand when it comes to this part. When, when Chris does leave, it's going to be hard, but I'll need a smooth transition there. And then the parade is Saturday. So that's all I've got.
You're all in the parade, right? Everybody?
Let me get back here, man.
I said parade, not tip. Yeah, we're going to be at the parades at ten o'clock. We'll be shutting roads down at nine thirty and then open it right back up. That's all I have, I know I've long-winded tonight, but if you guys have any questions?
Anthony, what about police in the park?
No, hiatus right now.
Okay.
We'll discuss that later.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions?
Questions for Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, John.
We'll have questions as things roll out.
Sure.
Okay. Lenny? Lenny?
Everything's out of work.
I hear they're sitting back there, it's supposed to be me.
It's like a million more bucks, man.
Yeah. Good evening, Lenny.
We've been picking up yard debris and bags. I apologize, the bags have gone untouched this week, but we've been doing a lot of other things that need to be addressed, but we'll be out tomorrow getting them. We got the park cleaned of fallen trees and limbs. We tore out the old concession stand and I took the sweeper over there Wednesday and started sweeping it and got that, I put it Friday, but I didn't get to it Friday, but we got it Monday morning before the park opened. All the big trees and logs and firewood, all but the big trees and firewood were able to get burned. We are still getting away compost and loading it out. We've been through the town twice, chipping brush since the storm went through. We'll be focused on the stump, stump removal and fallen trees and the alleyways yet to address. We'll backfill them as we get them out, stumps. We started back Monday sweeping the streets again. As we had a guy that was off for a month that runs a sweeper, that's the only after the street.
Okay, go build a park then.
And out the park, we've been maintaining the bathrooms. Ethan Fensings out there fixing the softball fence and the T-ball fence as we speak. Everything's mowed except for one spot off of West Thirteenth Street as it was sloped with all the rain. We can't get anything down there to mow it without getting stuck. Ugly Truck is in the park removing trees. They got all the trees around Manetown Mountain. They got two more to take down south of the, south of the park. So it's not really in the way when they're working. And the park reopened Monday.
I should clarify, we're not removing all the trees around Manetown Mountain anyway. We, we're trimming some of the bad limbs and stuff. There's real hangers that needed to be opened up and we did take down some trees. Did our expert from the DNR, I don't know what, he was here three weeks ago now? And went through the park and some of the areas of town. This fellow is one of two people in the state with the DNR who can evaluate a tree. There are a lot of arborists with the DNR, but most of them are like forest experts. This gentleman had his little rod and he started with the root base of the tree and made the statement that he starts at the bottom and takes a look at the condition of the tree because if that's not good, you're wasting your time looking up any higher. And evaluated some of our hundred and twenty-year-old trees and there were a few we needed to get out of the park out there. Which you've done a great job with the tree removal folks. Their effort's been really good.
Yeah, thank you.
I would invite some of you to go out and check out the Manetown Mountain area. It's probably the first time in a lot of years the sun's been able to get to Manetown Mountain.
That's for sure.
Yeah, but.
That'll help on the mosquitoes.
Well, that and security activity too, you know. But everything's come along pretty good out there as Lenny mentioned. Bill Rowe, Bill Rowe, Bill.
Wallace.
Thank you. Bill, he was in school with us too, wasn't he? Yeah, Bill Walsh is working on the, the electrical issues out there. Miles and miles of overhead wires. A lot of them have come down with the storm and a lot of them are just bad situations. So he's putting everything back underground. We will have everything going, everything able to be used right now except for the south end of the park. The, the lights at the softball field and at the bicycle ramp area, they're, they're not working yet. But everything is working right now and like I said, it's all going to be, ending up, going to be underground. Did I miss anything there?
No, I just wanted to apologize to everybody about the park being closed so much because I know it is a, a way of life for people and they use that very much and, but you know, safety's a big factor, you know? You can't, can't go in there when there's down wires or trees hanging up in the forks of another tree or it just, just ain't right to send people in there to do it. I mean, you gotta do your due diligence and get, make sure it's safe for the public.
The trees that were down are almost down or everything, that all has to be addressed before, you know, people running around in there. What do they call it, insurance business, a dangerous nuisance?
Attractive nuisance.
Yeah, attractive nuisance, we had a lot of that. Lenny, I just think you did a happy job in one month. It was a lot.
Yeah, they, they might as well put that on.
I was going to say, you can apologize, but the work you guys have done has just been unbelievable.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta bring a group of guys in the house, that's for sure.
And it's been incredible for as much damage as there was.
Thank you.
Well, and Lenny will agree, it was all hands on deck.
Yeah.
And I was going to tell you too, you can still utilize some of Lyle's personnel next week. We need some help with the bag pickup too, I wish I'd have known that. We have gotten them drafted again, but we had golf course personnel, we had park personnel, we had waste treatment personnel, we had water department personnel. Everybody was involved in the cleanup and we still have certain jobs that they're still involved in. That was the cleanup phase, this thing is going three phases. Next, and we're starting this next week, the tree board, they've been involved. They have gone through the damaged areas in town, street by street, address by address, giving us, have given us a list of what needs to be done at each location. Is the sidewalk torn up, does that need to be addressed? And by the way, that is a conversation we'll have to have with the homeowners and their insurance companies. As you well know, that fits into the homeowner's category, some of it. And then, you know, the stumps with the tree balls and stuff, there's a few of those that we've got to get removed and holes filled back in. And, you know, then any other debris issue that might be left on residents, they've got it all outlined for us. They've got a nice list for us. So we've been through that and the work starts next week. And then after that's completed, the third phase will include the tree board and our DNR expert with replanting where we need to replant it. And of course, the homeowner will be consulted in that too. Somebody doesn't want a tree there, we're not going to force a tree upon them. But our DNR expert's going to be involved because he says it is so crucial that you mix up the species. You get crazy about one species, one disease can come through and wipe out all your trees. So it's, it's in three phases and you're doing a good job with it, I appreciate that. Any questions for Lenny?
Have we started burning those yet or did we?
Yeah, that's, that's another thing I want to thank the Jackson Excavating folks. They came out and dug a huge hole for us after we started the plant and we've been burning since day one. We've got about thirty days left on our emergency burn permit that the EPA folks issued to us. And I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, we advertised that we had this permit to burn as I didn't want the neighbors saying, what the heck are they doing over there? And there was some confusion even recently.
Yeah, yeah. The, the permit is for the city, not for the citizens. It's not an open burning anywhere in the city. It's the location that's in the permit, which is out at the, the, the street barn. And it, it's pretty specific on how and when and what they can burn and, and they've been doing a good job. But it, it's not an open free-for-all in the city. The, the item from earth is for the, the city of Rochester, not the citizens of Rochester. And it's to be done out at the street barn under the supervision of Lenny.
And I didn't was great, they issued, like you say, we got it right away, told the state, give it to us for sixty days. We need more time, just call them and we give them some extension. They said that's what those permits are for, for emergency situations like this.
And we will be, and it'll blow it over thirty days.
We're about thirty days into it so we can continue to clean up. We also, like I said, Jackson's, we needed to thank, but we also wanted to call out and thank the county because they allowed us to take some of the stuff out behind their place. They had a permission for burning also. And between the two locations, we were able to dispose of an awful lot of material.
Yeah, we helped each other out quite a bit, me and John.
Right, you and John worked really well together, yeah.
I'd also like to say there's plenty of firewood too that out there for people. I mean, as we've been burning, we kind of been trying to separate the logs from the brush and get the brush first and throw the, throw the logs off the one side. So there's, rather than burn it, usefully, if someone could use it, there's plenty of it.
I want to mention that Alex, we can get there.
We're open like seven to three thirty, Monday through Friday.
Now, are they allowed to bring anything out there, the citizens?
They can, but I'd like to know when they're coming, so I can just kind of keep it on.
So they can contact you if they?
What they're dumping, because we don't want no trash out there, they got to leave them to the town.
Well, a permit is something good for certain things and we need to make sure.
I was thinking like the trees or something.
And everybody's always, they had always called the city hall and they re-burned them to me and so I can, you know, make sure that I'm trying to burn mattresses, the couches whatever else might be burned out there.
Well, and that's the quickest way to lose your permit right there, you'd be done. We have to monitor that pretty closely.
But I'd also like to thank Bill Morris because he helped a lot in the effort. So the ground was wet, he came out there and got some bigger wood in the park and cut down a tree for us too. So he kind of stacked up the brush for us, made it a lot easier because we would have took our loader out there and would have been cutting some ruts and then we're going to be fixing some problems with it.
Yeah, Billy did a nice job for us and he did it for the trees and took them out there. My gosh, it looked like pike lumber truck going out of there at different times. It, a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff.
They definitely helped in the efforts of us when we came there because everything was in a nicely orderly fashion and we just, you know, addressed piles as we see them.
If none of you have ever seen a hundred-year-old maple tree that the ants have been working on, it's pretty awesome. There were a lot of hollow, hollow trees that fell, yeah. So our DNR expert was a welcome sign.
Yeah, he's a very knowledgeable guy and I see.
Anything else for Lenny? Thank you, sir. Randy?
We went out on Fourth Street, created a punch list of items that needed to be completed so we can close out the project. And also what was out there, we're going to install a soakaway out by the dentist office because we got water pounding and this will pretty much take care of that issue. We have a meeting tomorrow with Commonwealth engineers to negotiate the cost and fees for the federal highway grain we got for sidewalks in town. And then as far as the fifty-fifty sidewalk, the first eight have been completed. We got eight more, but we got to evaluate what kind of cost and what's left in the budget as far as whether we can do any of them.
We'll be able to do some, but I'm not sure. We pretty well hit the budget monies for the fifty-fifty pretty hard. We may have to wait until next year. We may have to wait till next year to do, do the ones that are in the queue. Right?
Yeah, yeah. Um, then I hope Lenny will brush in, I've been starting turning compost again.
For the uneducated like me, what, what is a soakaway?
It'd be, uh, you know, you bury a twenty, twenty-four inch tile, stand it on end and the water will run to it and then soak in the ground.
Okay. Has holes in it?
Yeah.
Ground hole. Dry well.
French drain.
French drain. You know what a French drain is? It's not really a French drain. Oui.
Bonjour, Mr. Paul.
Oui, monsieur. Is it French drain?
Welcome to the educational channel, ladies and gentlemen. Anything else for Randy?
And I saw you put one on at country club too.
Works good, don't it?
Yeah. It was new.
Now, that was a French drain.
Because there were Frenchmen with parades there, because I watched them.
Anything else for Randy? Thanks, Randy. And Marcus is not here and Derek's on vacation.
Magic.
Yeah, you know what? We just, we just hit it, John. We just asked to hit it. Uh, Terry's not here this evening, uh, David's not here. Gary, how about Area Planning Commission?
Well, this is gonna probably be a little bit of a shock to you, but I have nothing to report. However, I, um, did request numbers, uh, Casey's on vacation and I'll give you the permit numbers the next week.
Okay. Uh, Fedco?
Hey, Fedco met June sixth. We have been reinstated retroactively for a five oh one C three status. Finally got that news, I've been working on that for a little while. Uh, we're getting ready to look over the 2020 budget. Terry and I worked on that and we'll be presenting it to the executive committee pretty soon. The ag strategy we've been talking about, Jim Shaw and Terry met with Connie Eininger of Indiana State Department of Agriculture to review their data and what they're encouraging communities to do. They also met with Mark Kepler and reviewed the information. After those meetings, they decided to reach out to economic development directors in the five surrounding counties to ask them about their ag strategy and see if there are any opportunities for, for us to work together. Um, youth center, the youth center, um, has about, at, at the time of our meeting, had forty-five thousand dollars of the fifty they needed to get, to get started. Um, we had a couple of local companies step up and commit to ten thousand a year for three years. Rochester Homes, the county commissioners, Optimus Club, all committed five thousand a year for three years. Um, after the article ran in the paper, TCU, Advanced Mechanics, both reached out to Terry to get information, um, about possibly donating as well. They were still waiting to hear from, they were scheduled to present to the Kiwanis Club, um...
That happened.
Yeah, like I said, this meeting was on the sixth.
That happened last week.
Okay.
Did they get some money?
No. But we have a medal.
I see.
So there, there, as of this meeting, there were five thousand dollars from their goal with companies and other community, and other organizations lining up to, um, help, help, uh, help out financially, so that, that's off and running. They will be hosting, they're advertising the job for the director, uh, and they were planning on starting that on the tenth. Um, they saw their, their board had to review it and they were planning on advertising on the tenth for the director position.
Did you, did you happen to mention where they're planning on, uh, their facility, where they're planning on, uh, operating?
Uh, I don't know that it was finalized, but I mean, they were really looking hard at the former Fastenal building. Um, they were also looking at, they were going to look at other areas, again, at the time of that meeting.
That, that other area fell through. They're, they're concentrating on Fastenal.
On the Fastenal. John thinks nice, it's right on Main Street.
Yeah, that, that's the, the big thing, it's easily accessible to kids. Um, the Miami County Job Fair, uh, was tonight, um, and Wednesday, and that was the result of the Schneider Electric closing out, you know, a lot of displaced workers, so we're all in that, um, Job Fair. The theater was working with the South Bend Cubs to have a Rochester Theater Night where every ticket sold would benefit the theater, um, to some degree, not, not totally, but Wings, et cetera, is planned to break ground, um, it was six to eight weeks, um, two weeks before this meeting, so we can do that math. Uh, well, Terry also reached out, had a meeting with the realtor from that deal, see if they had any ties to any hotels that might wanna locate an area. Um, Fulton County Airport, King Aero Aviation Services plans to occupy the spec hangar that is being built out there at the airport. And then from our roundtable, it's pretty much the same news, most of the local businesses are doing quite well still, um, economy's still pretty, pretty well, rolling pretty well in this area. And that is what I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for Lenny? Okay. Uh, Redevelopment Commission did have a meeting, uh, last month and, uh, again, yeah, Wings, et cetera, they're about thirty days away from breaking ground. Um, the project on the table for the Redevelopment Commission, we've been looking at, getting some information regarding, uh, the, uh, the completion of the, uh, street out of Apache Drive in the, uh, in the mall area in front of Schnabel Tears that would go clear to fourteen, uh, include sidewalks and drainage and also some utilities. Uh, we have a lift station there, we're taking a look at, uh, be involved to beef that lift station up. We're, I wish Marcus were here right now, we're about seventy percent capacity for that lift station. That would be, uh, the lift station that would service the new jail also that, uh, so we're taking a hard look at that, see what we need to do out there, but all that's sitting on the table of the Redevelopment Commission right now. We have had some engineering folks take a look at some preliminary figures, all that will cost, and we'll be reviewing that at our, you know, next month's meeting. And that's pretty much Redevelopment.
Estimated time from groundbreaking to opening on the wings, do, do we know about what that time is?
I made the comment, I think I got this number right, right now, they have ninety of these that are being built across the line.
Ninety?
Ninety, yeah. Yeah, so they, they do this pretty much like popping popcorn, uh, they don't know what they're, they're all about and they, once they start breaking ground, it'll probably be very quick.
Look how fast Pilot went.
Yeah, look how Pilot went.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you'll, you'll be eating wings before the summer's over, I'm sure, Marty.
Okay.
Okay, Park Board, Mason?
Park Board met on the tenth of the month. Laura said the pool, there were some mechanical issues with a few of the pumps that they were currently working on, other than that, everything was going fine. Lenny gave his report, I don't have anything to add to that, great job. And, uh, Lyle said the revenue, I don't have the numbers with me, but the revenue's down, uh, golf course from the past three years, however, it's been raining every weekend, so that was expected. It's still up over, I think, fourteen, thirteen to fourteen, I think that's as far back as his numbers go, but we're not far behind. He thinks some good weather will catch back up. During the storms, he said they lost twenty to thirty trees, uh, but they did get it back up from Memorial Day weekend, so that was good. And as you had at earlier, some of his staff have been helping the parks with, um, some back cleanup and... I think any questions, that's all I have.
I think they did a really good job too, didn't they, Lenny?
Yeah.
Working with us, that is.
Good workers and very respectable young men.
Any questions for Mason? Okay, um, Rochester BZA and Council on Aging, Marty?
Yes, sir. BZA, uh, has no meeting tomorrow, canceled for no activity and unfortunately, as previously reported, I was unable to attend yesterday's council on aging and I do not have any information to report there.
Okay. Any questions for Council?
I might be able to handle them.
How was your vacation?
I wish that's what it would've been, man.
Okay. Uh, solid waste and animal adoption, Center Chase?
Nothing for animal adoption. Um, solid waste, since last board meeting, the recycling center shipped seventy-four tons of recyclables with a value of four thousand three hundred and eight dollars and eighty-five cents for the month of April twenty nineteen. The county line landfill received forty-five thousand five hundred and ninety tons of waste in twenty-four working days for a daily average of nineteen hundred tons per day. Fulton County accounted for five thousand eight hundred and sixteen tons, the rest of the Indiana County did thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-five tons. There was twenty-eight tons of out-of-state trash collected. The district's host fee for the month was sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the county's host fee for the month of April twenty nineteen was nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, since the last board meeting, they've sold two hundred and eighty-seven orange bags. Bringing that total to six thousand six hundred and thirty-six. Of the orange bags, three thousand two hundred and eighty-six were purchased by city residents and three thousand three hundred and sixty-eight were purchased by county residents.
Now, that's a total for the four years for the project, right?
Since it started, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and they've, so far they've collected three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for disposal of bulk items since they started that as well. Um, they ordered a couple of new signs for out front with orange lettering, uh, she went in and ordered those from Chad Lewis. And then they got their new truck that they ordered from Rochester Ford, this is one ton, and, um, we're starting to utilize that. Have a little, a little problems with, uh, trash in the trailer, in the, um, recycling trailers again, like over on our chapter and Marcus. So Stacy's gonna try to figure out what to do about that, but we're not really sure what to do. Might have to pull it for a little while and put it back or something, so.
Can't you, Marty?
Probably, yeah.
Marty, that's in your neighborhood.
I, I could try to, yeah, you want me to put that on my schedule?
Thank you.
Can we put the trailer at your house?
There you go. Make it easier for your monitor.
It's used a lot.
Yeah, it is used a lot, yeah.
Maybe we should watch that.
The, uh, you know, the nineteen thousand, uh, county host, they've got there, how much of that goes to the solid waste folks? Any idea?
So the county host fee that they get, they get the whole nineteen thousand eighty-six.
Okay, any questions for Chase? Thank you. Chase, uh, tree board and EMS, Brian's not here tonight. John, water board?
Yes, sir. The best thing ever is when Terry starts it out, the plan and operation updates, everything is operating as normal, things like that. Unelectro flushing will, uh, take place starting on July eighth and continue for thirty days, so watch for discolored water. It won't hurt you, but it won't look good either in your coffee in the morning. Uh, meter testing will begin as soon as the M E Simpson's scheduled us to start. Old business, uh, the mayor informed the board that city council reviewed and passed resolution oh-two dash twenty nineteen, resolution concerning deceased customers. Update was presented to Derek to the board for employees taking vacation for the month, the management of that, Randy Carr and Derek. Sorry, Derek, I had to do that even though you're not here. Always pick on him like that, we shouldn't. But that was, uh, really about everything that he had on his one list to me and then the report that he would've given was that they red meters, orders repaired, replaced bad meters, locates.
Sweeped them off.
Backwash filter beds. Notes, wetting off the plant. What I missed?
We could do it for you.
We can do it for you.
We used to hear.
Oh, go ahead. But everybody has this one. I was trying to help out the TV crowd, my head.
It's kinda like me with chip and brush.
Okay.
There's callouts.
Well, we'll just go down to the, uh, callouts. Joe Murray was called out at five sixteen nineteen, it's at fifteen PM, at thirteen oh nine Lakeview Bend for the, uh, meter leaking, meter was repaired. John Loudermilk was called out at five fourteen nineteen, at three forty PM to thirteen oh six Dogwood for not having any water due to the wrong curb stop being turned off. Uh, water was turned back on at the curb stop, I remember that one. Randy, Randy Carr was called out for an emergency locate for a broken utility pool. Randy Carr was called out, uh, at, uh, five twenty-four nineteen to eight oh seven Dogwood Drive for an emergency locate for a broken utility pool. Randy Carr was called out at five twenty-six nineteen. At least that's not another broken utility pool. Uh, at fifteen oh two Jefferson Street for an emergency locate for a broken utility pool, it was too, he had it wrong. And, uh, any other questions for anybody, let me know.
That is one of your best reports.
Like, oh, Derek wasn't here and I went through that pretty quick, but...
Will there be a schedule published like in the paper for that discolored water thing?
Yes, they, they always do that, let them know when the, you know, directional flushing's going on. They always put that in there. And everybody's had that in the morning, you have the morning, you can call the guard and go, "Ooh." It won't hurt you.
It really won't.
It really won't hurt you. It's just the fact that it doesn't look too good.
Marty, I can answer that. I've already sent the press release out because Derek wanted it sent out at least thirty days ahead, or, uh, two weeks, not thirty, uh, I think it's fifteen or twenty days ahead of the timer. So we've already sent that out and it will last for thirty days, the flushing will, so, uh, he just found out that there is gonna be a slight delay in the start time, so it might not be right on the eighth.
Is it because I'm on vacation?
Weather, weather has something to do with it.
Weather does, weather has to do with it.
And I, I, I'm not sure with that, why weather has for just flushing the...
It's the weather.
So anyway, so yeah, it'll last for about thirty days, so once they start it and it will go through that thirty-day period, um, we've asked the media to just carry out and throw it in like for the Sentinel, talk to the town, reminder, you know, we're gonna put it on the water bills, so we'll get the communication out there as best we can, I'll get it posted on the website as well, so they'll know.
And that happens every place in town.
Yes.
In that thirty days, some, some will be.
Some, 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 yes, you know. Pivotal areas, you know.
Check the water before you do your whites.
Yeah, that's probably what they call that.
Okay, shout out, yes, about the sewer too, about the flushing that they're doing? Oh, yeah. Cause they're causing discolored water. Yes, that's a good idea.
That's being posted also.
Well, yeah, we've got that, well, I just got that press, press release done and sent out. Uh, there's also gonna be, the sewage department is going through and cleaning their lines and in the process of doing that, they're opening up the hydrants, so because they're opening up the hydrants, it's causing some discolored water, kinda the same thing, there's some discolored water, uh, potentially some low pressure.
But that has nothing to do with the sewage, so...
No, it's just, it's like, no.
Let's make that perfectly clear.
It has nothing to do with the sewage, but what it is, is because when the guys flush it, they need, they need the water from the hydrants in order to, um, hydro support the truck.
Well, and too, with the, uh, with the cleaning that's going on, you may, you may have a, a sense of sewer gas in the area while it's going on and that's, that's all perfectly normal, so.
And that press release went out today.
Yeah.
And that calls on the staff.
But, uh, but the key thing John said there is that little brown water, it, it's perfectly safe, it's just a little rust, that's all. Any questions for John? Oh, I'll tell you, I felt like I was at the water board meeting, he did a great job. Anybody got a question? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any ADA concerns that aren't listed that have come up? Nothing?
We've taken, we've had one report and we submitted a letter to the property owner. There was a bush eating the sidewalk. So, we just sent a letter out.
Yeah, we had a bush grown out over a sidewalk. Tough situation.
So, we've addressed that. And that's about it.
Was that on Arthur Street?
No.
Okay.
That would be a trailer because Marty's gonna move the recycling trailer to the lawn for a little bit.
Okay. Any, any legal issues, lawyer, Perkins? Okay. Okay, well, with that being the case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wowee.
Voted by Goodman, second by Thompson. Those in favor, we're adjourned.